Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Seline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting of April 7th, 2015 to order. Will everybody stand for the flag salute in moment silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Price will be sitting in, subbing. What is the term we use as the clerk today? So, Don Merriman is off doing his duties for Election Day, so will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Shadwick.
Here.
Mr. Guell.
Here.
Mr. Price, I'm here. Ms. Larson, Mrs.
Here.
And Mr. Smith is not here today.
Let's move on to the public forum, and it's a time for the public to come forward to talk about an issue that is not on the agenda today and is limited to three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to come forward at this time?
Ray Riska, 235 North Santa Fe. In the meeting upstairs, we talked a little bit about what occurred last week, about exceeding the limit for from $3,000, over $3,000, without notifying anybody, and Rita Dyster pointed it out, that in emergency purchase, that is allowed. And at that meeting, I commented to her about, what was the policy number? She gave it to me. Thank you for that, Rita. And she indicated there were some supporting documents for that event to occur. I just received in the update upstairs, one section that says, "There is a tabulation of verbal and written quotation sheet." And I'm assuming that that was done by the county administrator. Is that true, Rita?
First of all, I need to know what you're referring to.
Well, it's...
On the page that I handed out this morning?
Yes, page two, and it was Policies 4032.
Yeah, I know, but what I handed out this morning, under competitive sealed bids, down here, is that what you're referring to?
I'm referring to competitive purchasing, Level 2, and it has A and B, and then B has an item number 3 underneath it. And it says there's a recorded tabulation of verbal and written quotation sheet. Now, that would be supporting documents for that particular event, and I'd like to...
Ray, you need to look at competitive sealed billing down here at the bottom, Level 3A, and it says that unless it is determined by the county administrator that this method is not practical. And in this particular situation, it was replacement of heaters in the middle of winter, and it didn't seem practical since the repairman was already on site. So, that's the part of the policy that was followed.
So, you're saying that the emergency purchase, which if you define emergency, it would be a serious, unexpected, and often dangerous situation requiring immediate action? Is that how you determine that?
Ray, I'm talking about competitive sealed bids, Level 3A, at the bottom of the page that I handed out this morning.
That's time on that?
Time limit on that, three minutes. If you'd like to bring that up after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you about it also.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward at this time?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. A few weeks ago, the commission began a process of reviewing all health department grants and grant applications and programs. It so happens that the Heartland program is one of the first to go under review. Saturday's Journal contained an excellent article on the Heartland program. The county pays a match of about $67,000 a year, and the Heartland staff work with an average caseload of 87 families to help lift these families out of poverty. Yet, this commission is about to consider whether the county's best interests are served by reducing expenses to reduce the mill levy, by possibly cutting funding to the Heartland program. So, I'd like to call the county's attention to the Robert Wood Johnson's Grant Foundation's CountyHealthRankings.org report that places Seline County 72nd out of 101 counties in health outcomes. We rank 7th in the state for access to providers and excellent hospital care, but we rank much lower, perhaps 77th in the state, for socioeconomic factors that negatively impact health. And this commission's decisions would significantly impact the community's health. So, that is why the attention that is currently being focused on the Heartland program is of greatest concern. I would like to ask the public to go to seline.org and look at the request for action on the Heartland program, which is behind today's agenda. And I ask that the community go to countyhealthrankings.org to learn about, more about where we rank as a community in terms of health outcomes. I believe ongoing fiscal, financial support for these programs like Heartland's Health, our money's well-spent to the ultimate well-being of our citizens.
Thank you, Karen.
Karen, excuse me, just a moment. Are these microphones on?
Yeah.
What is, what was the website that you cited at the very beginning?
County?
No, the very, very beginning, something about a report.
Oh, the Salina Journal?
No. I heard a name of...
Robert Woods Johnson. Robert Woods Johnson is the countyhealthrankings.org report.
Okay.
They're the parent, or they're the sponsor, or whatever, of this website.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And it's very interactive and contains a wealth of information.
Thank you for the information, Karen. Anybody else that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Item number one.
Proclamation declaring April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And it'll be read by Amanda Oliver. Hi, Amanda.
Welcome.
Oh, good morning. Okay, I'm a sexual assault advocate for D-VAC, so that's why I'm reading the proclamation. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show 1 in 5 women and 1 in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that 1 in 6 boys and 1 in 4 girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 to 17 were 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. On campus, 1 in 5 women and 1 in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. We must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. When we actively get involved, we can prevent sexual violence. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for us all to take action to create a safer environment for all. Seline County joins advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future.
Very good, thank you. Is there any other events that we need to be aware of?
Yeah, D-VAC, and Kansas Wesleyan, and the Salina Art Cinema have partnered together to bring the documentary, The Hunting Ground, to Salina, which will premiere April 15th at 8:00 PM at 150 South Santa Fe. And we're also doing a second screening on April 29th. So, want everybody to come out and see the film.
Is that at the Art Center Cinema?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have action?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare August, or April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Item number two.
Proclamation declaring April 2015 as Fair Housing Month.
Do we have a representative today? All right.
Do you want me to read that proclamation?
Yeah, if you would, sure.
Whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title 8 declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. Whereas the Board of Commissions of Seline County, Kansas, is committed to the mission and the intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many reality companies and associate supporters fair housing laws. And whereas the Fair Housing Group of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination, and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violation of the fair housing laws. And whereas equal housing opportunity is condition of life in our county that can and should be achieved. We, the Board of the County Commissioners of Seline County, Kansas, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and express the hope that this year's observance will promote fair housing practice throughout the county dated 7th day of April 2015.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare April 2015 as Fair Housing Month.
I'll second that.
So, motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Item number three.
Proclamation declaring April 7th as National Service Recognition Day. And it's going to be read by Bill. Can you pronounce that for me, Bill? Chedwood?
Chedwigan.
Chedwigan, oh, right. Chedwigan.
Thank you for coming, Bill.
Thank you for having us.
I didn't want to say it wrong, so...
That's all right, most people do.
Okay.
Including me, really. It's not exactly the way they pronounce it.
All right.
I'm here to represent the volunteers of Seline County. And so, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the service to others is a hallmark of the American character, central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, educating students for future success, supporting veterans, military families, and preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas the National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership opportunities for those who serve. And whereas the National Service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, including Seline County, bolstering the civics, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas National Service represents a unique private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas AmeriCorps members and local Service Corps volunteers serving through foster grandparents and RSVP programs demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service in our community. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leadership nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining the county leaders across the country to support the County Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7th, 2015. I therefore, now therefore, I, Monty Shadwick, hereby proclaim April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in Seline County, Kansas, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service to our county, to thank those who serve, and find ways that they also can give back to their communities."
Very good. Very well-read. Is there any other events that we need to be aware of?
We are closing out the Vida program by April 15th, hopefully.
Right.
Which has been very successful this year, and we'll have Spring Spruce up Saturday, April 18th, 7:30. So, that will be kind of a closeout.
April 7th?
April 18th.
18th, okay.
At 7:30 in the morning. Have a breakfast and different things for the people that volunteered for that.
Thanks for coming by, Bill. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Item number four.
Seline County Sheriff Office Volunteer Recognition.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Sheriff.
It's an honor to be here, following Bill and RSVP to recognize volunteers. These are people that provide a valuable service to the various agencies of the county. At the sheriff's office, we have, at the current time, and these numbers change always, but right now, we have 52 volunteers that come into our agency at different times of the week, the month, the year, to provide services to not only my employees, but to inmates. Of those 52 volunteers, 11 of them are Reserve Sheriff's deputies. These are men and women who take on the task of learning the functions and the job of the sheriff's office. They purchase all of their own equipment. Otherwise, what you see me wearing is what they wear. And this is privately purchased by them to be able to come in and volunteer their time to help us with serving warrants, with actually filling in shifts when I have a lack of people to come in to do the job. And they do that quite often. They will come in and fill a full eight, 12-hour shift for us on the road, answering calls and doing what regular, full-time certified deputies do. We have 11 of them, 18 Monopatrol and Rescue Squad members. This is a private organization that formed years ago, and they provide services to us, to the county and surrounding counties of helping law enforcement at times of disasters, at times of missing persons, at times of accidents at the reservoirs. They are, they go out, we have a dive team there. One time, it consisted of six dive members. Some of them have now left, they've retired and gone on, but we still have a very active dive team that goes all the ways to Gary County. We've been all the ways, as far west as Ellis County, helping people on recovery, helping people on locating people that have wandered away, on evidence finding, and escaped inmates. So, these people provide a very valuable service to us. In the jail, we have a chaplain's service in there of preachers from around the community that come in and provide a service to inmates. Inmates have certain problems, or they happen to be a member of that individual's church. They come in and help them and their family work through their incarceration, and do what they can to keep them involved in what goes on in the community. And I can't name all the members, but one of our members, I think deserves special recognition, Sister Mary Lou Roberts. I don't know how many of you know Sister Mary Lou, but Sister Mary Lou has been involved in the chaplain's program since early 1970s, and she is still involved. She is a very valuable asset. She gives us a lot of good guidance. She's been around through a lot of the hard times. She's been a very good supporter. There's a total of eight chaplains that come in. We have a total of 27 people from various churches and organizations throughout the county that come in at different days of the week, different hours of the day, and provide religious help to the inmates, inmates that want to participate. We cannot force inmates to participate, but you'd be surprised, the number of inmates that take advantage of that and sit down and talk to somebody about their problems and get some of the things off of their shoulders that they need help with. Then we have AA volunteers. There's eight of them. They come in and work with people, part of Alcoholics Anonymous, try to work them through the program, get them started in a program, and encourage them to participate when they get out of incarceration. We have another individual, Edith Martin. Edith has been involved with us, like Sister Mary Lou, for many years. Edith comes into the jail, and we have a visitation window where everyone comes into the jail to inquire about inmates, inquire about what's going on in the jail, what they can do to help somebody, or whatever. And Edith Martin has been coming into the jail mostly on Sundays since 2000, well, no, since 1995. She started when the new jail opened, and she came in almost every Sunday and worked that window, because we don't have the staff to work that window. We have to have staff that are running the consoles inside the secure area. They'll have to leave that position to go answer the window and answer questions. So, Edith took it upon herself to volunteer to do that, and she came in, she learned that procedure, and she's been doing it since 1995. She stayed until 2003, when she left for a while to take care of her mother who was having health problems, and then she came back in 2006, and she's been there ever since. Almost every Sunday, they look forward to seeing Edith Martin come into the jail. Sister Mary Lou, besides being a chaplain's helper, Sister Mary Lou comes in every Thursday for the last couple of years, and she comes in at probably about 8:30, 9 o'clock in the morning, and she's there at 5 o'clock every Thursday evening, managing that same window, answering questions, and counseling people on what they need to do to help whoever they came in to see. And then we have Ashby House. Ashby House is a godsend also. They come in, there's, I don't know how many members of Ashby House, I think there's one, two, three. There's eight of them that come in a couple at a time, every Friday. They come in every Friday, and they offer life skill services to the inmates. They come in on Friday afternoon at, I don't know, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock. They spend an hour offering life skills to male inmates. And this is budgeting, this is shopping, this is job hunting, anything that a person might need some help in, or where they have expressed an interest in receiving help in that area. Ashby House puts together a program, an hour-long program, and works with them. After an hour with the males, they spend an hour with the females. And now, this combined group of inmates, every Friday, runs between 20 and 25 inmates that receive that service. And I was talking to Tina Miller, our volunteer coordinator over there, and she says, "They miss very few Fridays." An inmate may come up with something this Friday that says, "I'm having trouble with this. What do I need to do?" They will come back on the next Friday with researched information, and they will present that to that inmate and others that can use it maybe for two Fridays in a row, because it's that important to help that person get out and possibly, possibly not come back. And one of your members, one of your members, Dave Smith, has been involved with us for quite a few years. He comes in as a religious volunteer and sits down and leads Bible study with maximum, maximum-security inmates. Everyone else deals with medium and minimum-security inmates. A certain faction of these people deal with maximum inmates, because they can't be out with everyone else. So, everyone receives a pretty good service from people who are willing to donate their time and try to help the county. We're working right now, I'm working with Captain Hansman, on putting out a spot on our website that deals with the volunteer programs, and a way that people can volunteer or pick up an application to come in and volunteer to help with the services in the, at Seline County Sheriff's Office. And I know we're the first county organization that's gonna tout the accolades of the volunteers, but they deserve this recognition. They deserve more than this recognition. They deserve a special day, maybe, where everyone in the community recognizes them with a smile and a wave and a thank you, because they provide a very valuable service to all of us. And I want to thank RSVP. Thank you.
Great information, Sheriff. And again, you said that they, people that are more than willing to do this could pick up an application? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, they can. They would, right now, they would come into the sheriff's office, and they would get with our volunteer coordinator, and she would walk them through the facility, because a lot of times when people come in and see just what they're getting into, they say, "No, thank you."
Right.
But there are certain factions that say, "Yes, I want to get involved, and I want to help." And those are the people that we try to recruit, and they provide an extremely valuable service to us.
It's great news, and we just need to let more people know about it.
It'll be out there.
This is part of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the Sheriff?
It is, it is a great, bunch of work for these guys to go out there and do that. The reserves, I was on a reserve program for like 20 years, and when I was running racetrack, why, those people came out, we put them together, and they worked with us. Those volunteers are the hardest-working people you've ever got into, believe me. They know how to, they know how to work.
Have to agree with you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five.
All right. Resolution 152162, appointment of Robert Vidrickson to Seline County Planning and Zoning Commission. And this resolution will be read by David Neal, Planning and Zoning Director.
Mr. Neal?
First, if it's okay with the Commissioners, I would like to just take items 5 through 10. They're all the appointments for the planning commissioners and Board of Zoning Appeals that you had voted on last week.
Very good.
So, I don't have to read six different resolutions.
Mm-hmm.
I will substitute each, instead of reading each individual resolution and name, I'm just going to replace it with everyone named, so that we're just reading two, and...
Wonderful.
When I'm done, you can skip ahead to item 11.
Okay.
A resolution appointing everyone named to a three-year term on the Seline County Planning and Zoning Commission. Whereas pursuant to KSA 12744B, the Board of County Commissioners of Seline County, Kansas, is authorized to appoint members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And whereas the Seline County Planning and Zoning Commission will have three expired terms and one vacant seat. And whereas everyone named has expressed interest in serving the citizens of Seline County as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And whereas the potential appointment of everyone named was discussed at a public meeting held on March 31st, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that everyone named be appointed to serve on the Seline County Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term that will begin on April 1st, 2015, and expire on March 31st, 2018, adopted this 31st day of March, 2015. Then the other resolution...
Do you want to go ahead and name those people for that?
Yeah, I can, the quick, everybody named to the Planning Commission is Mr. Robert Vidrickson, Ms. Deborah Blumquist, Mr. Brett Ferguson, and Mr. Ken Stromberg. Then the other resolution, this is covering items 6 and 8, is for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those are Mr. Daniel Baffa and Mr. Darvin Dent. A resolution appointing everyone named to a three-year term to the Seline County Board of Zoning Appeals. Whereas pursuant to KSA 12-759, the Board of County Commissioners of Seline County is authorized to appoint members of the Seline County Board of Zoning Appeals. Whereas the Seline County Board of Zoning Appeals currently has two vacant terms and one expired term. And whereas everyone named has expressed interest in serving the citizens of Seline County as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And whereas the potential appointment of everyone named was discussed at a public meeting held on March 24th, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved that everyone named be appointed to serve on the Seline County Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term that will begin on April 1st, 2015, and expire on March 31st, 2018, adopted this 31st day of March, 2015.
All right. Questions or comments for Mr. Neal? And we will vote on those individually, I assume?
You have already voted on them?
These are the resolutions.
These are just the resolutions that you would have to sign? We just wanted to read them off in public, so the public knows what you are signing.
Yes. My only thing is, they were adopted on the 31st, or they adopted today?
Officially, they're adopted when the resolution is assigned.
Which is today?
Which would be today.
Okay. I caught that, because it said April 7th here, but you read March 31st. I was confused on the adoption versus the resolution, so...
Correct. Resolutions are never adopted until the board actually signs them.
Okay.
Unless there's some special publication requirement.
Okay.
All right. Well, I guess we'll do them one at a time. You want me to read those, or you want to read them?
No, no, at this point, we've gone through it.
Okay, we're just gonna vote on all of them at once?
You voted on them last...
We've already done that.
Yeah, this is just the formal resolution.
Yeah, we just need to have your signature on there.
All right.
And it's done.
Very good. All right, well, thank you for the resolutions and all the work there, and looking forward to it. All right, we can move on to item number 11 then.
Amendment number one to Resolution 142143, authorizing the transfer of road and bridge fund monies to Special Highway Improvement Fund from the 2014 budget. And Rita Dyster will be commenting on this, Administrator.
This is amending a resolution that was passed at the end of the year as part of our housekeeping duties. We are needing to amend it for the road and bridge money at the end... the end of the year, there was some money that could be transferred into other funds by statutory authority, and at the end, when we did our original resolution, we had all the road and bridge money transferred into the spatial machine, or the spatial highway fund, and we have now, through staff and commissioners, decided the best transfer of that money would be $800,000 to the capital improvement fund for the future repair or building of the shop building of the road and bridge department, and $200,000 to the spatial machinery fund. So this is what we're amending today.
Questions? Is there any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept Amendment One to Resolution 14-2143, authorizing the transfer of these funds from the 2014 budget.
I second that. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four, zero. Item number 12.
All right. Road and Bridge Monthly Update. David Noah, Road and Bridge Director.
Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. What I'll be covering here this morning is the monthly update for March for the Maintenance Division. Rural Patrolmen, we've been focusing our Rural Patrolmen on just grading and maintaining the roads right now. With the dryness, that has created some problems. We need moisture just as much as the farmers do, we really do. But some of those rock-type roads get pretty hard. The sparks are flying off those moles boards, believe it or not. And also doing some shoulder pull, retrieving some aggregate along the shoulder of the roads, that's a pretty standard procedure this time of year as well. The picture you see up there is, what I'm going to talk about here right now is some tree trimming activities that we were involved with. That picture that you're seeing right there is on Cunningham Road, just south of Shilling Road. This was a picture taken before, and this is a picture taken after, which shows how we've gone in and cleaned up and opened that right away up in there. We also have, on Ohio Street, south of McReynolds, this was before, and again, the after. And in this particular case, not only was we cleaning up and side-lashing on the roadway side, but the property owner actually went in on the agriculture, the farm side, and he went in with an excavator on his side and did the same thing. Of course, that was hedge encroach out into the crop lines immensely. But not only did he do it along the Ohio Street right away, but then he went east along the property line and did the same thing there. So he had quite a bit involvement with that one. And this is on Waterwell Road, just west of Holmes Road. We worked with the Land Institute, Mr. Jackson, in cleaning up an area in there, and this is the results of that. The next photo that you're seeing here, this has to do with a crossroad culvert, a corrugated culvert that goes underneath the roadway. This was on Shilling Road, east of Cunningham. This is the before, and this is the after. The shadow from the excavator is kind of hiding the culvert in there, but if you look real closely, you can see the new culvert that was put in. And again, we're looking at a crossroad culvert here, and this one was on Amos Road, north of Country Club, so we're way out on the eastern part of the county. This was the before picture, and again, here is a photo showing the after. This photo here is an area down on Wyman Road, just south of Waterwell. Neil Cable's gonna be visiting with you here, I believe, next week regarding the bridge replacement project. You Commissioners have already been briefed on this, this location and the bridge replacement project. But part of, part of what the Maintenance Staff was involved with was, in preparation for this project, the clearing of the trees in the area where the bridge would be built. And again, here's the after picture showing the results of that. This photo here is showing an entrance that we worked on. We worked with a property owner out on Simpson Road. The location of the existing entrance into that field was at a very poor location, visibility-wise, but also because of erosion and just a number of other things. And we worked with the property owner in moving that entrance up to the top of a hill where we could eliminate a culvert, which is always valuable. If we can eliminate a culvert, that's always a win-win for us. It put it right across the road from an existing entrance, and what it's just gonna do, it's just going to make a lot safer entrance for everybody involved. Simpson Road has a lot of high-volume traffic that travels at a fast speed. So we've made this entrance a lot safer, and from the standpoint of our department, the erosion on Simpson Road's gonna be a whole lot less. So this is an instance where we, working with the property owner, had resolved several issues, really. The next series of pictures is, this is pictures of us doing, it's a bituminous asphalt repair-type work activity. The truck that you see up there holds the material, and right behind it, we'll have some better pictures, is what we call our duro-patcher. This is probably the one asphalt bituminous-type work activity that we do in-house. And what it is, is it's where we, we can go in and we can blow out all the loose aggregates, and then we can shoot in a fresh oil with a mixture of rock, and it lays in in layers, and it really holds up very well. It's a, it's a very economic and effective way of patching. A little bit of a close-up there. I believe that's the end of the pictures. But we're gonna, we've already been doing duro-patching on some of the asphalt roads as we are getting, it's somewhat preparation as we go into this time of year, just right before the contractors come in. The crack sealers will be here soon, but as far as the preparing for the sealing and overlays, anything we can do to help out at this stage is very beneficial and saving money. So it's a work activity that we're gonna be doing considerable amount of here in the near future. Just to touch on a few other things here, we had about 27 work orders that we had for aggregate requests. We hauled out about 420 tons of Lincoln roadstone. There were about 70 tons of sand that we hauled out, and about 115 tons of rock that we hauled. So even as dry as it is, there are areas that we still have to maintain and watch the surfacing on and try to identify those weak areas. The only other thing that I'm gonna note on here this morning is, last week, Wednesday, Celine County did host the North Central Kansas County Highway Officials' Meeting. It was their annual spring meeting. There are 16 counties in this district. This meeting, counties take turn in hosting. This year was our year to host it. We had a good turnout. There was about 88 participants, heavily attended by county commissioners and highway people throughout the North Central District here. Monty, you were there and gave a welcome. I greatly appreciate that. And Dave was there, and Jim, you were there. Appreciate you guys coming by. Hope you had a chance to interact and mingle with some of the others. But it was a very successful meeting. The facilities that the expo provides, the 4-H Building, everybody was very pleased with the facilities that we had, and it was just, it was a great place to host a meeting this year. So thank you, Commissioners, for allowing that to happen.
Thank you for the birthday party. Now, hey, I was really interested in the DOT guy that talked there, talking about the road, you know, that goes to Gibson. That was something that has not been talked about since, what'd he say, 1951? When they bought that, when they purchased that land?
It's been a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, he said 51. I'm almost sure that's what he said. But it was, it was an eye-opener for me to even know that they bought that and thinking about building a four-lane road out there. I doubt that that'll come about real quickly, but it at least got back on some kind of a burner, didn't it?
Well, a lot of that would depend on the state funding.
Yeah.
That's all gonna boil down to that. But that's obviously a project that there has been interest by the state of Kansas for many, many years in making some improvements out there. But because of the fact that is a state highway, it's probably why, it's probably not known so well.
And it was, you know, it was well done. I mean, to be able to pick up something like that out of a meeting like that was, it was really great for the, Celine County anyway, to realize that they're even thinking about us out there.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for the pictures, by the way. I know the public, the public can see that on TV, is that right?
Yeah.
My understanding is they can.
They can, okay.
I hope it was clear on TV than it was here. For some reason, the day was not as clear, but...
I just think it's interesting. I like the before and after pictures. It's good, so, thank you.
Another comment on your deal in the lobby up there. That's a really nice, who done that?
We did that probably about three or four years ago. Commissioner Goss, you have to realize, over the years, I think I've been involved in making preparations for these type of events, probably about seven, eight, nine times. And every time that this came up, you ended up spending a great amount of time going around, getting pictures, putting it all together. And about three or four years ago, the staff and I, we talked about trying to put a display together that wasn't dated. That is something that was very generic of what we do, to where we could put it up at the, so if someone came to me and said, "Tomorrow, we need to have you put a display up," it's just a matter of grabbing a bag and spending five minutes and putting it up.
Well, it's a very...
So I think that, I don't remember anymore what we paid for that. But I believe it has paid for itself many times over already, and it's, hopefully, it's something that will just represent the Road and Bridge Department in, in a way that somewhat is factual.
I was up there looking at it the other day, and there was about five people stopped and looked at it, and I says, "You know, this is new to me. I really liked the screen processing. It was really well done."
Well, like I said, it's just amazing when you think about the amount of time that is spent in preparing something like that, doing it one time, and then putting it back in the case. The next time someone needs it, it's ready to go. Hopefully, we can use that for many, many more years to come.
Well, thank you for the report, and there's no action on this item. Move on to item number 13.
Approval of County Commission Minutes of March 31, 2015, which, it's not last week, it's the week before, is right?
No, that was last week.
Yeah, last week.
Last week.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
We got comments.
Is there any comments? Yes.
Any comments on this?
On the, on the very first round, number two, that was Tuesday and Wednesday on the Crisis Center.
Oh, correction to the minutes.
Yes.
Correction to the minutes. On number two, Commissioner Guile will, would like it to say, Commissioner Jim Guile will attend the events at Crisis City Tuesday and Wednesday, instead of Wednesday and Thursday.
Right. Because it was gone Wednesday at noon.
Well noted. Thank you. Comments from the public?
Ray Rusk, 235 North Santa Fe. Don Merriman, the county clerk, is not here today. He's taking care of the voters. And I'd like to point out that the draft minutes were not included in the agenda sent to the public this week. And he got off this week. That's all.
Duly noted. Okay. Any other comments?
And that's because of the election, and he's done pretty well to...
He's done well up to, you know...
Well, but he was, the last election, he was six weeks behind, so he's really brought it up to par pretty well compared to recent times.
I'd just like to point that out. It's really nice to, you know, to get that taken care of properly. Thank you.
We'll accept a motion with, with the changes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the County Commission Minutes of March 31, 2015, as corrected and presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to zero. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission today?
Did you say four?
Four, zero.
I think Don would want to say be sure and get out and vote.
Vote today.
We're voting.
Votes are open till 7:00 P.M.
Yep. So be sure. He'd be really talking about that, and he's got everything set up, so try to get out and be a citizen and vote.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four, zero. We will adjourn until 1:30. Well, we will meet upstairs again for about, until business is concluded.